The Chairman of the Lee County Board of Commissioners called the meeting to order at this time, this being the third day of November of 2008. We're meeting to conduct all business which will be properly brought before the body. First order of business will be our invocation by Mr. Hoyle. I ask you to remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
May we bow our heads in prayer. Almighty God, the fountain of all wisdom, guide indirectly, humbly beseech thee, the minds of all those who are called at this time to exercise the responsible duty of electing fit persons to serve in the government of this nation, state, and county. Grant that the effect and right issue of their choice may promote your glory and the welfare of this people. And to all those who shall be elected, give we grant thee the spirit of wisdom, courage, sympathy, and true godliness. In this we ask in your holy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Recognize, Mr. Mary Yount, the presentation of Employee of the Month.
Good morning, Chairman Brown, Commissioners, Mr. Crump, and Mr. Hall. On behalf of the Workplace Committee, I am here to present the November Employee of the Month. The Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Laura Kelly of the Lee County Parks and Recreation Department as Lee County's Employee of the Month for November 2008. Ms. Kelly has been employed with Lee County since 1992 and currently serves as an Accounting Technician 3. Ms. Kelly's pride in her work and the professional manner in which she completes her duties has made her an indispensable member of the Parks and Recreation Department. As an Accounting Technician 3, Ms. Kelly assures in support of the Parks and Recreation Director that the administration of the department's budget is in compliance with all accounting rules and regulations. She can also be relied upon to propose and implement procedures designed to effectively utilize the department's resources. Ms. Kelly frequently goes beyond her job description, whether it is to assist her coworkers or to stay late to see that the public receives the services they need. As stated in her nomination, Laura is dedicated to and takes pride in her work. She works to ensure that both the Parks and Recreation Department and Lee County are successful and seen by the public in a positive light and is always willing to take on tasks that fall outside of her job description. Laura frequently works after hours to assist both the public and coworkers. Laura and her husband Roger have four children, and they are avid Carolina Hurricanes fans. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and her service and commitment to Lee County citizens, Laura Kelly should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in a warning, Ms. Laura Kelly, Employee of the Month for November 2008, in recognition of her dedication to the citizens of Lee County.
Do you have anything to say?
Thank you very much for this award, thank you.
All right, if you'll come forward, please. I present you a Star Award, also a framed certificate of Employee of the Month in November 2008. Lee County Government recognizes Laura Kelly for going beyond and above regular duties to be an outstanding employee, signed by the County Manager and myself. Also, your boss man is here, so I will tell you that you have earned a day off with pay. So, you'll help me work that out. Also, a certificate from Papa John's, one from the movie gallery, and one from the Coca-Cola company. So, enjoy, okay? I would like to thank the movie gallery and the Coca-Cola Company, and also Papa John Pizza for sponsoring this award each month. And I know that many of you probably frequent those places, and if you go in, tell them that we appreciate what they're doing to recognize our outstanding employees. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
We have, from the Finance Committee, we have a memorandum that we sent forward, and would like to have the County Manager and the Finance Director address it under "Old Business."
Okay. Would make that item B. Any other changes? There are your motion that the agenda be approved with that addition. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered. Are there any concerns concerning the consent agenda? If there are none, do I hear a motion that the consent agenda be approved?
So ordered, Mr. Chairman.
Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's so ordered. We come now to the public comments section of our meeting. And as I did last meeting, paragraph 10 of our procedures states that speakers shall not discuss any of the following matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person addressing the board, matters which are closed session matters, including but not limited to matters with the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, personnel, property acquisition, matters which are made confidential by law, matters which are the subject of public hearings. I now recognize Ms. Edith Cates, and I would tell the speakers that they would... They have three minutes, and Mr. Hall will be the timekeeper.
At this point, I didn't realize the speaker would get up before information was given. And so, can I relinquish my opportunity to speak?
Yes, ma'am, you can. Okay. Recognize Mr. Keith Clark.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we are aware that it is election time, and it is time that there will be changes in this board. I do not know... I understand we do have one more meeting in November, but I wanted to express my appreciation to the Chairman of the Board for his courtesy and the manner in which I have been treated in these meetings. And extend my good wishes to those who, by choice or other reasons, will not be here. I want to also thank this board for beginning its meetings with prayer and with a pledge of allegiance. There are places in this country where they have... Where boards such as this have allowed shark-talking attorneys to talk them out of doing those sorts of things. And I very much appreciate the manner in which you start these meetings. And we wish you the best, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Moving on to "Old Business", we have the second vote on a franchise agreement. Mr. Cherry, if you will approach the podium. The franchise agreement was acted upon on the first reading with the vote of four to two to approve. And at this time, I would ask the Commissioners if anyone has any question of Mr. Cherry concerning the franchise.
I don't have Mr. Cherry, but Mr. Hoyle had recommended that instead of a 10-year franchise, we may want to look at a five-year franchise. And so, Mr. Hoyle, could you maybe let us know what your thoughts are on that?
This franchise only relates to less than two acres. And I estimate that it will fill up in two years. And my recommendation to one who gives the gentleman sign that it's operated, knows what the economy is going to be. But once that franchise is filled, we'll be without one. And if they don't partake in one, if they got an exclusive franchise, there won't be one in that part of the county.
Why do we have to have an exclusive? I mean, why is it... That's the word.
That's y'all's.
That's the word that concerns me.
But they'd be gentlemen asking in order to protect their investment.
Well, and if he wants to expand it at the end of two years, he will have to come back to this board for approval to expand it.
Yes, sir.
And anyway, there'd be an amendment to the franchise agreement.
Yeah, well, he'd have to apply for another two acre or larger, whichever he calls on. If he asks for more than two acres, he's got to comply with the... He's got to comply with the state rule.
And it can't be contiguous property, right?
Right.
Are there any other exclusive contracts that we have within the county?
Sir?
Do we have any other exclusive contracts like that? I mean, that's the word that concerns me more than anything else. The transfer station is no longer... The contract we have with Waste Management is no longer exclusive. That was removed in the last agreement, basically, and, you know, if anybody else wanted to do a transfer station and increase competition, so we did... We no longer have an exclusive that I'm aware of. Maybe the ambulance service.
The ambulance service is exclusive.
Ambulance service is exclusive.
Transfer station is... One period of time exclusive.
I think that just... You know, are you limiting somebody else from having the opportunity of doing that? Another business from coming in and another tax base for the county.
Well, just in that particular area, this is the rest of those counties.
Would be open. Yeah. Well, it's what it's half... I mean, it's west of U.S. one. Yeah, it's a pretty good chunk.
Well, and you know, he's going to have a pretty good investment in this thing, I think. And he needs to have a little protection of some kind.
The problem will want to hear from Mr. Knight, Mr. Clark.
Let's hear from Mr. Cherry first. I want him to show the pictures he took last week.
Okay.
The Commissioners.
Well, Mr. Pasquale, I went out in that area, specifically North Plank and Carleton. I did see a couple of dump sites, and I'll pass these around. This is North Plank.
And this is down at 42. Right outside the road. Got this back there and ducked it.
Do you have to drive by this every day?
Yes, this is... If I do, it's good, I do.
This would get the...
42, that's... That's the port you're going to make it.
I mean, would this person have paid to... Obviously, they're just illegal anyway, would that person have paid to dump it?
Well, I mean, I don't... We can't enforce it in a room as long as we don't have somewhere to put it. I mean, you got... You know, you tell the fellow, you can't dump there. And he's walking, you got your back turned, he's going to dump it.
Well, I think what Mr. Kelly was asking was about contracts. There's a difference between a contract and franchise. Is that right, Mr. Hall? This is a franchise, not a contract. The county's not contracting with him to do anything.
Well, I mean, the people...
We're giving him the right to do.
That generate all this waste, they're welcome to carry it to Chatham, anywhere else they want to, but if they want to pay for the fuel to carry it, it's just going to be handy, and I think it's something we need.
Well, the motion was made at the last meeting before the first vote on the first reading, and so the motion is still on the floor for this second meeting, so we'll have the vote.
I wasn't here, and I've got a couple of questions I'd like to get answered. And one is, any changes we make to this request, will they go in the UDO? Will it have any impact on that?
They have to comply with the UDO.
Right.
And I have... They've already applied.
And is there a particular reason we would want to allow a franchise to exist longer than the useful life of the landfill itself, other than for business purposes?
Not from my standpoint, I don't know that.
If, under the UDO, I realize they have certain things they have to comply with, the Division of Solid Waste Management, do we get copied on all of that?
Yes.
Under the rules?
Yeah, we will.
Okay. And does the UDO address the franchise, the possible transfer of a franchise at all?
I believe the franchise ordinance says it's non-transferable.
Sometimes if you franchise somebody else, they have to apply for one. He can't transfer it to another party.
Okay.
If the LLC becomes disbanded for any reason, does that void the franchise as well?
I refer to Mr. Hoyle for that, I believe so.
Mr. Knight done operated it there because it's non-transferable.
Right, okay.
So, there are two things, the length of time and the amount of geography it's going to cover. What is it, anything west of Portland?
Yeah, that's one.
Could we have Mr. Knight, just to hear his perspective on this? As far as, you know, would it be... What would the difference be to him if we did five years rather than 10?
Yeah, Mr. Knight's friend. You approach the podium, please, sir.
So, we're cleaning the front, apologize for that. Well, what we're trying to do on this franchise is we put a lot of money up to be able to get, make this happen. Surveyors, a matter of fact, Dale Leach is supposed to be my spokesman, and he got tied up and couldn't be here today. Apologize for that. But the way it is now with the landfill closing down, no one seems to know when we're going to dump. So, what they do there, they just... Well, outside the road, y'all got the pictures here, and that's just a Sunday because it's all over the county. But what I was... What my partners and I have done, there's three of us, my son-in-law back here, Richard Board, and Mike Barber, and myself, we decided, well, we'll just go ahead and get a place and see if we can get it approved and if somebody will have somewhere to dump. And then, like I say, it takes a lot of money to do that. And we've been trying it now for over two years to try to get this going. And we haven't been successful up until now. So, right now, we got the land to do it with out there, and I've got several acres out there. Not just 27 acres, that particular piece, but I got other land, too. So, right now, once we would get that... And how the engineer came up with that, I don't know because he's the one that done it from Raleigh, that it would be two years. I think maybe five, 10 years. Because right now, Blaylock down here's been doing it for seven years, and they don't have two acres done. Wayne Bergerson out here on 421, he's been doing it for about seven years, and he don't even... He's not even half filled up. So, right now, the engineer must have said, well, it's going to be 150 loads a day or something like that right there to come up to that conclusion. I don't think that that would happen. I think it would be longer than the five years, and that's the reason why we asked for the 10 years to cover that. Any questions to make?
Johnny, that initial time that you came before the board about possibly creating one a few years ago, there was no place here in Lee County to dump any construction debris or anything like that, is that right? And you were having to take it out of the county?
In other words, we were taking it to 421 in Blaylocks down over Heber Road in Horney County.
Okay.
We're not talking about construction debris, are we?
No, no, we're talking about LCID.
Yeah, LCID. Mr. Knight did appear before this board, and he was instructed what he would have to do in order to establish a landfill of this sort. And to the best of my knowledge, he's complied with everything we had to do. Am I correct, Mr. Hall?
Well, I would tend to say, number one, I support what you're doing, and certainly wish you the best. My question is, would you be opposed to a five-and-five, five-year franchise with an option for five more years?
Well, Mr. Reeves, like I'm saying, you know, seven years, they've been hauling out there just everywhere. Lee County hauling, Chatham County, and Chatham County hauling, Chatham County, and then whatever, that's the only place that you could do it. And because diesel fuel is a high den, you know, you're going to haul to the closest place that you can haul. So, right now, on the south side down there, everybody taking it to Blaylock. And like I say, load after load after load after load going in there. So, seven years, and you ride by and look at yourself, it's not even half full. It's seven years. Sorry, thought I cut that off.
Any other questions to Mr. Knight?
I was trying to... So, what's your answer?
I'm running a 10.
Well, I like what you said, if that's what you want.
Well, I'd like to say that's why we've asked for the 10 years because the engineer out of Raleigh right there had figured it out like Lee County was just going to be just rolling, you know, like just rolling it in and everything. And I don't see that, especially now. Like I say, right now, Mike could get 10 loads a week, maybe, 10 or 20 loads a week, or something like that right there. And then see it's going to go on up there where we have to come back up here in five years, which if we go 10 years right there, I feel like that even 10 years won't fill it to get two acres up because you can go so high, whether that you say. Not just on the level ground, you can go up with it.
But there's no... According to Mr. Hall, there's no way to transfer the franchise or sell the franchise without the...
I apologize.
I know you're trying to trick me, aren't you?
This is not even my phone, if anything.
I have another problem.
That's the reason you can't cut it off.
I don't know how to work it, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's better, yeah.
I'm fine, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Is there a motion on the floor?
The motion was made and is still in effect. We took the first reading, last meeting, so what we need to do today is just have a vote on the second reading. And if it passes, then Mr. Knight has the green light.
Well, I'm reasonably satisfied that we have things in place that gives us notice and some involvement in the possibility of it discontinuing or being considered for sale or transfer. Call the questions.
Although in favor of approving the franchise, let it be known by raising your hand. Vote opposed. Vote six to one for approval. Thank you, Mr. Cherry. All right, moving on to the addition to the "Old Business", Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you well know, at our last finance meeting, we took some steps to work toward curing some of the problems at leasing your high school. And after we finished that, I spoke with the County Manager on behalf of the Finance Committee to bring together a synopsis of where we are fiscally here in Lee County at this point in time. There are a lot of... There's a lot of bad and erroneous information being spread about what this board is able to do. I commend both the Finance Committee and the Board for holding the monies that we do have in place for the length of time that we have, or otherwise, we might really be in serious financial trouble. But I've asked the Manager and the Finance Director to pull together some information that just so happens to coincide with what the North Carolina State League of Municipalities and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners have also provided us. And it's almost in lockstep in terms of what kind of fiscal condition this state happens to be in at this point in time, notwithstanding the condition that this nation is in. So, I ask the County Manager to take over.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. We sent out a report on Friday to the board outlining three major areas, the major capital projects that we have ongoing, and other capital projects, our current year budget status, and then we looked forward to next year's budget forecast. And what really got us started in the memo was we started meeting with all the department heads to see what they could do to cut their existing budgets to or 4% follow the state's lead, and if our revenues started to decline. And our first meeting was with Dwayne. first meeting was with Dwayne Brinson, and, uh, after we got finished talking about his expenditures, he let us know that our automobile values were declining, um, at an alarming rate. So, uh, there was a memo in there from Dwayne, I'm gonna let Dwayne step up to the mic and talk about our valuation, um, because I think, you know, we're, we've gotten pretty used to the last four to five years, our, our base growing, and I think we're looking at a real good chance that our base will not grow this year, actually will decline, so, um, Dwayne, you know, and step up to the mic and...
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, we did an analysis, I've been working with the listings manager to handle motor vehicles, and we've been seeing a, a severe decline in the registered motor vehicles values. So we sat down, and we've gone through, uh, six cycles thus far this year. Our vehicle tax base is around four hundred and thirty million, or was last year, four hundred and thirty million dollars. So, through, through the first six months, we've encountered an average of about one point three million dollars loss in vehicle values. And it seems that the further along in the fiscal year that we get, the more vehicle value we're losing. For example, the, the very first cycle, um, we lost almost half a million dollars. The most recent cycle, we lost over two million dollars. So it seems like it's, it's declining at, like you said, an alarming rate. Now, in estimating the tax base for this year, uh, I backed off ten million dollars for such a decline. So I feel like we're in pretty good shape with the current tax base, um, but, you know, next year's tax base, it, it may be declining because of the motor vehicle values. The, the next cycle we send out, we indicate the new January one values. So what we need to look at will be what happened since January one oh eight to January one oh nine, and that'll be, that'll be a major indication as to our tax base next year. So we could see a very sharp decline in motor vehicles. As far as real property, we, we're gonna increase about thirty million probably, um, and our largest taxpayer, which is Wyatt, their business personal property is about two hundred and fifty million dollars. So if they're not buying, or if any business isn't buying new personal property to operate with it, that's gonna depreciate. And Wyatt alone, if they lose, you know, if they're not buying anything, if they depreciate only one percent, it's a lot of tax money. So that's something we're, we're looking at on a monthly basis now, to make sure that this board and, and the county is, um, taking appropriate measures and with the best financial data possible. Do you have any questions of me?
The one point two million a month, is that a cumulative total, or that's an additional one point two million decrease in the tax base each month?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the, the first month was about half a million, the second month was one point three, the third month was one point four, um, the fifth was one point one, the sixth was one point six, and the last one was two million dollars, and that's each month dropped from, from the same cycle last year.
Now, we're getting ready to, to go to a different, uh, book value, right?
Exactly. This next cycle, we indicate the new book values. And in, in estimating, let's see if I can find the proper place in the memo here, oh, actually, on the very first page, the memo I gave to Mr. Crompton, you can see the first six cycles, and that's what's actually occurred to date, and you can see the drops. Last cycle was down almost five percent from that same cycle in, um, last year. The projected next six cycles, I estimated for the next cycle a ten percent dig, dig rates, and for the, the next five, estimated a, a five percent decrease. So as long as we stay within those bounds, we'll be well off.
What, what is our collection rate at motor vehi, with the motor vehicles?
Last year was about eighty-five.
And when is the state going to take that over?
Well, it's supposed to be in two thousand and ten, they've pushed it back to two thousand and eleven now. So when, whenever that, or whenever, if that does come, um, we should be looking at close to a hundred percent. Of course, you're still gonna have people that don't renew their tags in the same fiscal year that they expire, so that might skew the collection rate some, uh, but it should be up around a hundred percent when that, when that event does.
What does that fifteen percent represent in tax money, thereabouts?
I can figure that out for you and have it for you in the next meeting.
Well, I know that, you know, a, part of the problem is lack of capital, because I work for a small business, and we've seen several of our key lenders pull out, and I've also heard that in Sanford, one of the, the lenders that provided automobile loans, you know, has pulled out of that. So I think we're gonna see that that trend decreases, and people are gonna drive their old cars a lot longer, because there's no financing available for new ones.
Right.
And you're gonna see that at the businesses too, because they can't get, uh, you know, capital to buy new equipment. So we're in a real position right, like, right now, that, um, our tax base is looking like it's gonna decline. Also, if you take, take a look at the city's building inspections revenue, and, you know, how far off it is right now, you know, they're down almost a hundred permits a month, um, compared to last year. And, um, you know, so there's just no building in real properties, so at this point, you know, the growth has slowed in the county, um, and, uh, actually, we could see a decline. And, you know, looking forward, um, you know, we think we're all right this year compared to budget, but, you know, we're very conservative in the way we, in the way we use our tax base, um, in budgeting, but that conservative, every fudge, if you wanna call it that, that we, you know, that we were conservative with, we've lost. And, you know, that helps us build our fund balance, or, or cover the fund balance appropriated that we use to balance our budget. So there's a real likelihood that we will hit our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which will lower the amount of money we can use in next year's budget, so it kinda compounds what's going on, and, um, you know, we're looking, you know, next year, at the real possibility we'll have to, you know, cut our budget, um, at the existing tax rate.
Sales tax revenues are trending downward also?
The state is telling us they're trending downward, and we get the next, uh, distribution November tenth, so that will actually show us what happened in August, and, um, so, you know, July was up, I think that was just an anomaly, you know, of some sort, you know, why it was up fourteen percent, I don't know, but, um, you know, we're expecting an adjustment in August, and may see a decrease, but that's, you know, that's next Monday, and we'll look at it. But, you know, the departments have already done a good job of, of, you know, cutting back a lot of expenditures, um, we, you know, we held our capital purchases, uh, a lot of folks have not purchased their equipment that, uh, you know, we asked them to hold off on, we probably will not, um, do that. The travel, um, we've already cut overnight travel out and eliminated out-of-state travel, so, you know, we're trying to figure out different ways to get some of these folks their certi, certification training that they need, you know, whether by webinar or online or, or anything, so, so we don't have to travel. But, um, you know, we're looking at the real possibility that once we start seeing, you know, a couple more months of sales tax, I may come back to the board and, and actually go ahead and take the two or four percent from the department for the rest of the year to balance the budget. And, um, it, it's hit fast, you know, on us, you know, there's a little lag time between what's going on in the economy and what actually, you know, hits us, whether it's about four to six months, and, and so we're in that, in that timeframe now, and it has hit quickly.
Are we, you, you mentioned inspections, and I think that's just completely dried up right now. Are we locked into a fixed rate with our contract with the city? If they're not doing anything, are we still paying that fixed rate?
What we pay is we pay the difference, uh, we pay half of the difference between what it, uh, what they receive in revenue and the cost of the department. So as their revenue's going down, you know, and their costs are staying the same, the amount we're funding the inspection department is going up. So two years...
Do you do something about that?
Well, I, I talk to the city manager quite often.
You got a chance at the next finance committee meeting.
I talk to the, the city manager quite often about, you know, ways that they can cut expenditures, um, in that department, um, and, uh, that's all, I'll leave it at that for right now.
Well, at, at our last meeting, we, uh, put in a job freeze, um, until January fifteenth, and we have several positions that are, that are not filled at this particular time.
We have about eight, um, that are, that are frozen. I do have, uh, requests from the health department, um, they have an animal control position that just came open, and a physician assistant, um, position that came open, and those are two pretty critical positions to their department, they're asking to advertise. In exchange, um, they are going to give up, um, the nursing director's position for the rest of the year, so, you know, and they wanna trade so that they can, uh, they can advertise those two positions, and, you know, recommended to the board that we unfreeze those two so that they can, uh, fill those positions.
Are they coming before the board next meeting?
I told them I would present it today in my financial report and ask for that.
You go ahead.
I would move to support the recommendation for the releasing of the health department positions, critical needs.
All right. We'll take care of that right now. Those in favor of, uh, releasing, uh, health department, uh, enable them to fill the two positions, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Vote unannounced.
Did you make the other two? We're gonna make available two of the ones, the other, um, statutory boards, municipalities and association county commissioners.
Association, I'm getting that.
I've got it right here, I got something. It's just for information, or are you gonna discuss this?
I know, sir, this is...
Just for information. Yes, unless there's anything else they wanna discuss on the board.
All right, we will move on to new business, now recognizing Michael Watson, um, give us a report on Sand Hill Center.
Good morning.
Morning.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. What I would, would like to do briefly this morning is talk to you a little bit about what is going on with community mental health at the state level, and some of the initiatives that have begun to happen in the Sand Hills area. You should have received an annual report, but we will be sending you something quarterly that'll look a little bit like that, that will be kind of a mixture of financial and programmatic issues going on with us. The North Carolina General Assembly funded some new initiatives in community mental health, and they are very focused. They are very much focused around crisis services, and around the whole idea of increasing community psychiatric inpatient care. So when you look at, look, look at what got funded, you see two or three real critical things. One was an expansion of funding available for indigent inpatient psychiatric care. We still continue to have a significant number of people going to state hospitals, and this whole initiative is sort of trying to get local community hospitals to either open inpatient psychiatric units or to expand existing units. Another big funding initiative was mobile crisis teams, and Sand Hills was funded for two of those, and I'll, I'll get to those in just a minute, but what mobile crisis is, is designed to do is to have clinical staff who can go out in the community, can go to homes, can go to schools, emergency rooms, other locations where you have people in crisis. The whole idea is to reduce the number of people actually going to emergency rooms, and to, to deal with as much as possible crisis situations out in the community, and stop them from reaching a point where they end up in the emergency room, and eventually in a hospital. The other major funding area was something that Sand Hills has managed to preserve, I think, you know. They're really trying to figure out, how do you get people in to see psychiatrists? How do you have walk-in crisis capacity across the state? Unlike Sand Hills, a number of community programs, uh, essentially got rid of their psychiatrists. We have managed to maintain, uh, inpatient psychiatric crisis walk-in capacity in each of our counties. So one of the things the General Assembly did was fund money to pay for additional psychiatric time and clinical time as a way of making sure that people could get seen, uh, when they needed to see a psychiatrist and when they were coming out of a hospital. The problem we're having across the state now is what to do with that money. You should really have to try and find locations and places to sort of put people. So there's discussions around health departments, federally funded health clinics, uh, there's a real struggle to try to find locations, uh, that can be used as walk-in crisis facilities. The other major funding issue that the state dealt with was the state hospitals. If you, uh, continue to read the papers, you'll see that our state hospital system continues to be in crisis, aside from the quality of care issue, and there have been some very, uh, difficult issues around quality of care. The hospitals have been forced at several occasions to cut back on capacity to try to re-staff and assure that people got safe care. So we really had a loss in capacity in some of the state hospitals. So a lot of money went into additional staffing. It was interesting, your discussion earlier, we too expect budget cuts, so we're gonna be in a funny situation of money being handed out and told you gotta spend it within ninety days. At the same time, we are anticipating a two to four percent cut. We don't know that yet, but I'm sure that's kind of in the wings for us. The Department of Health and Human Services usually gets, uh, a big portion of whatever happens in terms of state government cuts. Just wanna mention two or three things that I think are very positive that are going on, you know. There continue to be issues around mental health reform, around policy and direction and priorities. Whoever the new governor is and the new secretary are gonna have to, I hope, set some very clear direction and, and a very thoughtful approach to how do we kinda move forward from this. But if you look at, sort of what's going on in Sand Hills, you know, we struggle with those same issues, but at the same time, I think we have managed to do some very positive things. I just wanted to mention a couple. One is inpatient psychiatric care. We've cut our admissions last year to state hospitals by fifty percent. That means instead of sending a thousand people to state hospitals, only five hundred left. And that doesn't mean that people didn't get treated, they got treated locally. We spent almost seven hundred thousand dollars for indigent care at First Health, which is where a lot of our Lee County consumers go. So we're spending almost two million dollars treating people in the community, and reducing trips to state hospitals and the use of state hospital beds. What's wrong with the system is we don't get rewarded for that. You know, we save all those bed days, and none of that money comes back into this community to help us deliver additional services. Another thing we've done is we've funded, with a couple of good providers, we've funded something called hospital transition teams. And one of the real focuses from the state is what happens to people when they leave a hospital? Because getting somebody into a hospital is a traumatic and difficult and expensive experience. That involves families, consumers, magistrates, it puts law enforcement and the consumer in a, a difficult and it's sometimes dangerous situation. It involves an emergency room, and anywhere from a three to five thousand dollar hospital stay, which, all of which we pay for. So the question becomes, once you've identified somebody like that in that situation, how do you stop that from happening again? And what we're funding is these teams that are accountable for everybody leaving a hospital on a name-by-name basis. They've got to see a doctor within thirty days, and there's very clear accountability. And their goal is to cut readmissions. Another interesting idea going on, there's a lot of it coming out of, of Lee County, is tell us the country. One of the things we're trying to do is figure out, with scarce psychiatric resources, how do we get people seen around a large rural area? So what we've done is connected all of our counties in a telepsychiatry network, so that wherever we can get physicians to go, and it's fairly easy to get them to come to Lee County, because you can get from Cary to Sanford pretty easily, so if we can get them to come out of the Triangle, Chapel Hill, Durham, wherever we can get them, they can, they can sit and see people in other counties. So we can have a child psychiatrist come to Sanford and see patients in Waitsboro. And we do that with a clinician on the other end, or a group of consumers who are not just kinda thrown into it. And the interesting thing is we're finding really good acceptance from our consumers for this service, and particularly children, I think, are probably a little more used to the technology of it all. So that is a, a good way to move, uh, an expensive resource around a rural area and cut out a lot of the travel and time lost to, um, move a psychiatrist around. Two other things I'll, I'll mention, and then I'll, I'll wind down here. A lot of emphasis on jail services. We have worked with sheriffs in each of our eight counties around a new state screening instrument, so that they can screen people coming... instrument so that they can screen people coming into jails to identify people who might have mental health needs. That's a good risk management tool for the sheriff and for the inmate. We're also looking at the daily booking logs so that if we know people who are being admitted to jail, we make sure they get medicine, and we can make sure that we know who they are and where they are. In a couple of counties, we tried to pilot a jail reversion program, and we want to do that across our area as we get more funding. That's really designed for a more aggressive look at who's in jail. A lot of people with mental health problems end up in jail because of relatively minor offenses. They don't represent a real danger to the community. If you can get them out and get them into treatment, they're better off, there's less risk in the jail, and there are fewer people in the jails. Final thing I wanted to mention, because I think it's a really interesting idea, is that there's a lot of talk about the quality of providers. As we've privatized the system, a lot of people came into it, some of whom had no idea what they're doing, and we've seen the results of that with some of the Medicaid issues around funding and audits and costs. But what we're doing right now this year is we're working with the Center for Family Help at UNC, and they have psychiatrists and pediatricians who specialize in child trauma. And we found forty clinical staff, private providers, across our area who are gonna be trained in how to deal with child trauma. And this is a nationally researched, best-practiced model for how to do it. It's costing about five thousand dollars apiece for each of them to go through this year-long training process. They have to do cases, they have to have case conferences, but when we're done, there will be a roster of forty people who know how to deal with child trauma. So we talked about departments of social services with sexual abuse kids, we talked about school systems, we talked about some of the issues associated with our military deployments and people coming back. At the end of the year, we're gonna have a group of people scattered across our area who really do know what they're doing with how to deal with this difficult problem. So I think that's a good example of how you pick a specific issue and you try to improve the quality of your provider network. Of course, Sand Hills this year, the kind of things on our plate are national accreditation. We have to become nationally accredited by the end of two thousand and nine, continuing to work on our crisis system, efforts to reduce the demand for crisis services so that we deal with things out in the community away from emergency rooms, continuing to reduce state hospital admissions, making sure that people coming out of hospitals get service and can be seen, and improving community inpatient care. I think those are really clear, measurable kinds of goals, and I think we're putting strategies in place to try to address them. Thank you for your time. I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Any questions from the... Okay.
How, if you have to reduce your budget, the two to four percent, how would it impact some of these new programs you're talking about? Will it put them on hold, or will you try to go through with them?
Well, I think what we'll have to do is just deal with what our priorities are and try to go through with them. Depending on the amount of the cut, I think there are some cuts we can make. And, you know, as you were discussing, we have a very strong fund balance. So maybe, you know, well, if this is a one-year thing, then we can shelter ourselves a little bit for a year using some of our reserves.
Michael, in your cover letter, the third bulleted item that you had in there was, you know, need to develop the organizational capability necessary to take over the Medicaid utilization management for Medicaid consumers. Is that, first of all, just Medicaid consumers and the mental health services there?
Yes.
Okay. That was never done before? Is that part of this four hundred million that got wasted with the last...
Yeah, that, prior, excuse me, prior to two thousand and one, local community programs did the authorization for Medicaid, mental health. What that means is that we decided, was the service medically necessary? How much should you get, and how long should you get it? As part of the transition that happened back in two thousand and one, that function was centralized at the state level and was contracted out to a group called Value Options, which is a big national managed care company, billion-dollar company, a really large company. And they have been managing that ever since. And that transition to them taking over Medicaid utilization review and putting in a bunch of new services resulted in the issue you're talking about, which is the community support issue where...
All these people came out of the woodwork and signed up as a Medicaid provider and no...
Exactly.
No oversight at all.
I mean, the good news is that that has been cut pretty much in half. It's gone from almost eight hundred million dollars down to about four hundred million.
So all the LMEs are gonna be required to do that now, not just Sand Hills, right?
That's the hope. The issue is to phase it in in a way that makes sense. We keep making very dramatic changes in the state, and somebody's gotta sit down and figure out what the priorities are and what do we want to do over the next few years and make them real clear. And I hope that comes from the prior to governors.
If you have a, say, a two percent cut in dollar amount ballpark, how much can you talk about?
Our budget's a little over forty million dollars, so a two percent cut would be...
Right, right, much.
Michael, one other question. I haven't had time to read all this. Do you see a trend in substance abuse cases for Lee County that you've treated since, like, maybe...
No, but I can certainly look at that data. I mean, we are, you know, we're spending a lot of money sending people to detox and to residential treatment. I think the problem we're having is finding good capacity back in the community to get them treated when they leave. That's my biggest concern in substance abuse.
I'm interested in trends, and I just kind of want to know, you know, where are they?
Just out of curiosity, under the two thousand and eight Housing Economic Recovery Act for all the foreclosures and the mail-out and all of this stuff, are you saying any clients that are depressed as a result of their losing their homes or anything along that line?
Yeah, I mean, we get, referrals tend to go up as the economy gets worse. I think the other thing that happens is that we have a number of sort of existing consumers that we maintain in the community. And as things get worse, their lives get more fragile in terms of housing and ability to get medicine and those kinds of issues.
Well, it seemed like you got a lot of things going on. Are you seeing an improvement in the attitude of the state to try to get the situation straightened out?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would give Secretary Benton a lot of credit. I mean, I think he came into a very difficult situation and has really at least tried to focus on some things that really do matter. Making sure people can get into a hospital, when they get out, that they get care. I mean, there are a few real priorities that he has managed to kind of refocus the system on.
He's been the best stabilizer they've had in the last four, five years.
That's the reason I asked the question, because I think there has been an improvement from the state level.
I think so.
They recognize more of what you're up against as an LME. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Yes, sir. Good report. Right, Mr. Crumpton.
I have a short report, Mr. Chairman. My first item actually is Nancy Kimble, Board of Elections. She's gonna give us an update on the one-stop and what things are looking like for tomorrow.
It's gonna rain. I hear it's gonna rain tomorrow, so that's not good.
Don't worry, I'll be blamed for that tomorrow.
As of five o'clock on Saturday, we had seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight voters, and that's about fifty-three point six five percent of the registered voters. Our registered voters' numbers are going up constantly almost by the hour. We now have a total of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-three, so if you gave them a report, it's outdated.
Wow.
How many of those Nancy came during the one-stop voting?
All of the seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight.
No, I mean the new registrations.
The new registrations, we had one thousand one hundred and eighty-one that registered and voted during one-stop.
And did any of them have to produce a driver's license or something?
Yes, ma'am. They had to produce ID to be able to register during one-stop.
Because I know you and I had a discussion before, and all they had to have was a utility bill with a name on it, so I'm just...
Yeah, they, that's part of the ID. That's part of the list that comes from the state. That utility bill is their ID. It can be a utility...
It could be their only ID, though, right?
That's correct, yes.
We didn't probably track those kinds of registrations, huh?
We're trying to. The state is, the system is just completely bogged down with all the registrations across the state, so we're trying to get that information in. It's just, they were showing us what five hundred and thirty-eight registrations as of this morning, which is only half of what we really had. That's, yeah.
Well, especially with this election, I think the one-stop voting has really paid off.
Most definitely.
Worth the money that we had to spend to do that. And it's an encouragement to see that over fifty percent of the registered voters have already voted.
That's right. It'll be much easier for the people tomorrow...
Right.
During the election itself. The numbers will be a lot better. Less voters, shorter lines, maybe it'll help since it's gonna rain.
Kelsey is a sherby, she'll have all the results by eight-thirty.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
Just out of curiosity, if people running into problems at the tomorrow vote, who should they contact right away if they can't get their address or a name or whatever the case may be, whatever the problems are?
At the polling place, if they can't find their name? What, the way that we have it set up is they will be sent over to the provisional table to possibly do a provisional vote, but then the provisional persons that are gonna be working there will be calling us to find out what is happening with their registration. And then we'll go from there, but no one will be turned down to vote.
All right, and is there, provisional table, is there several people there or one person in particular they need to sort out, or how does that...
We will have two people at every provisional table plus a judge overseeing.
Okay.
So it will go faster.
Does the judge have a badge or a colored coat or something?
They have a vest. The chief judge wears red vests, the other two judges will wear blue vests. They'll have buttons on saying, you know, if you need help, ask us.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. How about for the disabled, we have a...
All of our sites are ADA-approved, now that we're in the schools, but we do have group site voting. They can, there's a bell outside that they can run over the cord, and someone will come out and bring them their ballot to vote.
Sound good.
I think you offered that during one-stop voting also, because I talked to several people who really were appreciative of being able to have some make them out to the car.
Yes. The one thing that I wanted to remind everybody, if you're talking with people, is that the same-day registration voting is no longer available, that at the polls tomorrow, we will not be doing that.
That was only good up until Friday.
Saturday.
Coming Saturday.
Right, yeah, at the end of one-stop.
The thirty-two eight seventeen, I believe you said, what was that, that number?
That's the total registered voters we have so far. And actually, that number only reflects half of our new registrations that the system is sending through, so we could possibly go over thirty-three thousand registered voters.
Now, if there's a, if there's a line at seven-thirty, those who are in line are still allowed to vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
As long as they're in line.
What was the result as far as extending the time on Saturday for four hours?
What was our result with voters?
Yeah, how many people did you have? Did you track that?
I didn't, I didn't even have a chance to track that, but that was our biggest day. We had two thousand twenty-two voters that day at the four sites.
It was over five hundred after two o'clock, I think, was what you'd sent me.
That wasn't beneficial.
There, there.
Good.
Any other questions? Ms. Kimble, I would congratulate her and the Board of Elections, the job that you have done. I voted early, and the workers were real courteous and looked like they knew what they were doing.
I think they did. I hope so.
Okay, thank you. And I know that y'all have work to do, so we'll excuse you at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the only other item I have is Friday, I received a request from the city manager to place no loitering signs at the Community Development Building or the Woodland Building. And before I did that, I just wanted to let you all know I was going to do that. They're having problems after hours with people congregating in that park in our back parking lot there and doing things they're not supposed to be doing. So they wanted to be able to disperse folks, so I'm just gonna put those signs there, and he wanted me to mention it.
Where are they gonna be put up?
In the parking lot on the back side towards, I guess, towards that park that they put up. The Woodland Building, which is the Community Development Building, so...
How's that parking lot over there, Gary?
I think it's doing very well. Maybe there's some things going on with, I don't know, over there they don't like, and, you know, now they want the signs put up. I don't, the police want to be able to have something to enforce that, you know, mainly, you know, after dark to get, to disperse people out of the parking lot.
Sounds like a good place to put up some video cameras.
Security at our buildings has been a big concern by the police.
Sometimes investments like that are worth it based on what you can save in the long run.
If there's no problems, I'm just gonna go ahead and get general services to do it.
Just curious, are these signs in English? Or are they bilingual signs, or...
I didn't ask for, they didn't ask for bilingual signs.
I just couldn't quit a meeting without asking that question.
Perfect attendance.
And lastly, we got, finally got the information from Ms. Shook from Beaufort County, but I only made hurry copy because there's the book right there in front of her, and if anybody else would like to see it, it's in my office, or if you want a copy.
It really is interesting, and obviously, this board won't have time to take it up, but I would say after the next board is installed, this is definitely something we should take a look at, because they've done some interesting things in Beaufort County with resolutions and illegal immigration, so...
Are you gonna do a summary?
You have to read everything here.
I thought he had included some other stuff in here, and I started looking through this, and I was really impressed with some of the resolutions they've done, so...
Studies, they've done some pretty intensive studies at DSS and the Health Department to try to find out who's actually using their services.
Anything else?
On the signs, if you are going to install them, then they ought to be bilingual signs. Otherwise, we'll run into another problem. You may as well address it while you're addressing it.
How many signs are you talking about?
We'll probably have to put three or four along the back. It's a pretty big parking lot, so I'm gonna meet with probably the police chief, the city manager, and the Community Development Director and find out where they want us to place them and what they need us to do.
Now, this gives them authority to start enforcing.
Yes.
And sure.
Does the city have any... Does, does the city have any hourly limit of when the park is supposed to be cleared, say, ten, eleven o'clock at night or whatever?
I don't think they've made that determination yet, but based on discussions I had last week, they were hoping to make it kind of a dawn-to-dusk type situation, only during daytime hours.
Do they have security lights?
They have one light that's a kind of, it actually shines in our parking lot.
Over the park.
All right, come to comments from the board. Ms. Pascal?
Yes, sir.
Shook?
This self-appraisal performance, is that something each of us are supposed to fill out, or where did this come from?
That's Dwayne's.
Oh. Um, we, Dwayne and I had a conversation, and that's kind of an annual report, you know, six months, we, we met with him, and he had something similar to that. So I asked him to, to do that, so that you would be informed about what he is doing, what he's going to do and whatever.
Okay. Well, I thought it sounded like a good idea for us to self-evaluate ourselves too. No other comments, other than everybody get out and vote if you haven't already voted.
Mr. Quigley?
Go vote.
Same, same thing, go vote. But I would like to ask Mr. Crumpton to have someone from Public Works to check. Over there at the enrichment center, there's a light, one of the area lights right there at the building, that constantly stays on longer than it stays on at night for the, for the activities that goes on there at the enrichment center. I believe those lights work on the clock. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Russell?
It's pressing on time.
The one closest to where they serve the, the dinners at during the day?
Yeah, the ones in, in the interior are, are, in the interior of the parking lot are, are on time. Yes, sir.
That's the only one I've seen go on and, you know, stay off.
Which, now, the ones that are in the interior part are, you know, on time. Now, we didn't have the one that's out of my parking lot, it's, it's...
This is the one right there where you come under the canopy?
Yes, that's on time.
It's that little walkway that goes into the area?
We will check it. Normally, what they do is, they try to have maybe more than one out because it's required, we have to tell the boot types to watch the truck to change the lights. So normally, we do more than one at a time, but it sounds like it's my area. We'll need to go ahead and address the glasses.
Well, with the time change, you're going to have to change the clock anyway, so...
Yes, sir. Great, that's one, one issue. Of course, we're real busy today, getting out there, elections, so, so, and taking those elections, so we'll be busy the remainder of today's on that, of course, and tomorrow, those will take a lot of issues.
All right. Please.
Vote tomorrow or forever hold your peace.
Mr. Crumpton, anything further?
No, sir.
Mr. Hall, anything?
Town Broadway and the city of Sanford, they've moved past resolutions making our smoking regulations. There's the Lake County property in their jurisdictions applicable.
Okay, so we can enforce it now?
Yes, sir.
If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Although in favor, say aye. And if opposed, say no. So ordered. I appreciate your attendance out there. Appreciate the board.